Hello, everybody, and welcome to Happy Saint Patrick's Day. Welcome to the March seventeenth meeting of the Eureka City Council, what promises to be a very interesting night, or the end of a very interesting day, which is the end of an interesting week, and is going to be the new norm. Uh, can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Seaman?
Here.
Councilmember Costellano?
Here.
Councilmember Mezner?
Here.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Here.
Councilmember Allison is absent tonight. Councilmember Bergel?
Here.
All right, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a report out from the closed session, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor. No final actions were taken in closed session.
Thank you very much. And we are now ready for, uh, I need to make an agenda change, and I need to get approval for that. So I would like to add an item, which is this COVID-19 emergency time off, which will be added to the ordinances and resolutions, Item C two, but I need a four, I approve of approval. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Four yes votes. Councilmember Allison absent. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Um, in addition to that change, uh, I would also like to move the city manager report to the front of the agenda because, uh, he has some information about what we've been doing with COVID-19, and I imagine that people would like to hear that before we get into regular business. So, Mr. Lotter?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of council, I appreciate, uh, the opportunity to speak to you, but I hope that, uh, members of the public who are present, as well as those who will view either, uh, online or at some other point in time, will hold, will receive this message as though I'm also speaking directly to them. That's the, that's the purpose. Um, the mayor asked that I speak tonight about COVID-19 for the purpose of informing the community about what city staff has done and is doing in response to this new ailment. Throughout our nation's history, we've been confronted with never seen before ailments before. Our nation and its people have always risen to the occasion, and this time will be no different. Accurate information, good decision-making, and focused attention on our own individual health and the health of our loved ones will help see us through our current set of circumstances we find ourselves in today. If I might just preview what my remaining comments will look like a little bit, what I'd like to do is, uh, just generally explain what COVID-19 is and what we know about it, and where the vulnerabilities are in our population. And then I'd also like to just talk about what are good reliable sources of information, because there's no way that I can make a presentation that will answer everybody's question, or everyone's concern, or address everyone's issue. That's not the point of tonight. Uh, the point of tonight is to share some baseline information about, uh, this new virus, uh, to talk a little bit more specifically about what city staff is doing in conjunction with other agencies, and with you, Madam Mayor, and the council. So first of all, what is COVID-19? According to the California Department of Public Health, coronaviruses are a large group of, of viruses that have existed for a long time. COVID-19 is a newly discovered coronavirus that has not been previously detected in either animals or humans, and the source of the virus is not yet known. Symptoms are very similar to the flu, flu, uh, fever, cough, shortness of breath. COVID-19 is transferable via droplets, so sneezing and coughing are likely the easiest way possible to transmit them. But the virus has also shown an ability to survive on different surfaces, uh, for long periods of time, and so washing hands regularly and cleaning of surfaces oftentimes contacted by, um, one's hands. Uh, this is my personal editorialization. This is not on the California Department of Health website. Please clean your cell phones routinely, um, doorknobs, handles, things like that. We've stepped up operations around City Hall to do just that, to identify kind of those, uh, frequently contacted surfaces and to disinfect them with increased frequency throughout the day. Who is at risk? Older adults, uh, sixty-five and up are, are at more of a risk, although, uh, statistics do show that if you're fifty or older, myself is included in that category now, um, that you're at a higher risk than those who are younger than fifty. But sixty-five and up definitely have a higher level of risk, and what can also factor into that is regardless of age, uh, if a person has a compromised immune system, if a individual has chronic medical issues, uh, which could be heart disease, diabetes, uh, different kinds of lung issues, um, so regardless of age or in combination with age, those things can elevate your risk, um, if you contract COVID-19. So, uh, sources of information, and where can one go to get reliable information? Um, I'm going to cover that. Please understand, and I ask the public to understand this too, is that, uh, when, when confronted with something new like COVID-19, information gets updated rapidly. We learn more, uh, almost in hours, if not half-day, um, terms. You know, if you recall, by the end of last week, general guidance was avoid large gatherings of two-hundred-and-fifty people or more. Over the weekend, that was changed to fifty, and Monday morning, it was, uh, down to ten. So, uh, the guidances change as the information becomes more available, and I think it's just important that everybody stay vigilant and informed by visiting the county's, um, website for information. They've established a joint information center. You can call them at four-four-one-five-thousand, and somebody will answer your questions. If you email covidinfo@co.humboldt.ca.gov, they have a panel of individuals waiting to respond to those emails. You can get questions answered that way also. I have found, uh, the California Department of Public Health website to be particularly helpful. Um, and so that's another source, as well as, of course, CDC. With, uh, when confronted with a set of circumstances like COVID-19 creates, um, we're on a, almost a continuum of response. That means as more information becomes available, as circumstances unique to our particular locale change or might be different from other locations, we, uh, adjust accordingly. In a proactive effort to minimize the spread and impacts of COVID-19 in the city of Eureka, the city manager and the directors, uh, of, of our departments have met several times already and are meeting on a routine basis, um, a couple times a week or more frequently if needed as information changes. And we want to stay updated with relevant information, and we want to be able to adjust, uh, what our information is going out to the public, what we're communicating with mayor and council, and especially what we're doing with operations and how well we're keeping our employees in the loop so that they too can have the best and most current information so as to protect themselves. Because city operations, uh, in several instances have no, we have no other option but for them to continue to go on. Water, wastewater, emergency services, things of that nature must and will continue. Um, so, we have a plan. It is an organic plan that changes and adjusts according to circumstances. We're still in the process of refining that plan. However, it's important for, uh, the public and for the mayor and council to know that we have different levels to that plan. And those levels look at conditions. They have trigger events, and then they have actions that are outlined based on what those conditions are that it might exist, uh, and what those trigger events are. And so we'll look at, you know, uh, is the hospital now beginning to see cases, uh, that are positively testing and show up? Uh, and then that scale could rise to, are they starting to get, uh, overcapacity in their response? And those kinds of things will trigger different levels of response, uh, from the city and the choices that we make in conjunction with other, other kinds of triggers. So I just want to reassure you that such thinking and such a plan and, and those kinds of meetings are actually taking place. Um, there are certain, uh, parts of that plan that I'd prefer not to discuss in this venue uh, because what we are doing is, um, in an effort to protect, say, our first responders, say, people who might respond to nine-one-one calls, our police, our fire, there are certain, uh, precautions, uh, and, and things that are being taken that if they're responding to an event where there might be a criminal element or somebody of nefarious intent, we don't want them to necessarily know what the strategy is we're using to protect, uh, our personnel in the event, um, they may unfortunately be contemplating trying to spread COVID-19. But having said that, um, we have certainly considered a variety of things, and we've already implemented many of those things, and I'd like to review some of those actions with you now so that you and the public are aware. So first and foremost, I want to be clear, uh, all of our emergency services are operating as they would on any other given day. There is no change in the level of our service. If you call nine-one, nine-one-one, you will have police or fire or ambulance, just as you would on any given day. However, last week, I decided to cancel all travel, uh, for city staff. Um, there could be issues of training that, uh, end up affecting some of the services I've talked to you about. You know, an example might be, say, sending a dispatch employee to a needed level of academy training. Um, as, as time goes on, we'll evaluate those things. I think the state is also looking at postponing when credentialing of such kind might actually have to occur or figuring out alternative methods for delivering that training. So those are always in flux, but we also want to make sure that we have people who can actually function in, say, a supporting role like that, because let's face it, our dispatch staff are kind of our hidden heroes. And so we need to, to make sure we keep them healthy and, and happy as well, as well trained. Um, special event permits are being canceled, especially for larger events. All recreational programs are canceled for the foreseeable future. Um, I think it's important, because this is a serious matter, so we have to discuss some of these serious, uh, type decisions or thoughts that we're contemplating at a staff level, but a plan of succession has been created that is in our, our, uh, emergency response plan. So let's pick the most obvious, uh, of choices. I become ill myself, and I'm unable to fulfill my duties because of my ailment. There is a succession plan that delineates exactly who would step in and assume my role per the charter and city ordinances, and we've done that in all of our service areas to several pers, uh, several staff deep. So the point is, is that we must maintain a continuity of government, and our plan does just that. We've also done other things like postponed utility shut-offs. Uh, our finance department informed us that this is, uh, the time of the month where we might be contemplating doing that. It seems counterproductive to turn off one's water when the best way, one of the best ways to fight COVID-19 is to wash your hands with soap and water regularly. So we're doing that. Uh, finance will also work with citizens who may be falling behind or in arrears on their bills, um, just so that we can all get through this together. As of March seventeenth today, uh, City Hall is operating in, under an appointment-only method until further notice. This will allow for us to have a person sitting at the front counter on first floor, and they can, um, meet and greet an individual who's coming in with a scheduled appointment, kind of triage them a little bit, ask them literally how they're feeling, and if they have a fever, a cough, or respiratory issues, and if so, they will need to ask them to, to seek medical attention and, and go back home. I did talk with the county health officer today, uh, and wanted to know what her specific directive was with regards to businesses and their operations. She's not making any particular, um, directive at this time with regards to, uh, ordering closure of specific businesses. Uh, still, she still believes that a certain amount of activity is actually still healthy for the community, and our circumstances don't, uh, warrant quite that of an extreme, uh, action. Um, we need our grocery stores open. We need our pharmacies and places like that open so that people can still, uh, get the necessities of, of life. And I believe, you know, like restaurants, as long as they're kind of maintaining their social distancing, uh, in their seating arrangements, could, could still operate. And of course, these things could all be a little different tomorrow. And the zoo, we did close the zoo today, and so I just wanted to make sure that, um, you and the public were aware of that. Um, you know, with, I've had a lot of questions or, or, uh, specific concern presented with regards to homeless or, or asked of me with regards to homeless, so I just want to touch on a few points there. Um, efforts are, are being made, uh, by our partners like, um, Betty Chin, the Rescue Mission, Free Meal, to try to help educate the homeless on the risks, risks of COVID-19, how to mitigate those risks. There's a little concern that perhaps they're not, uh, quite as aware of what might be going on, uh, with COVID-19, and so, uh, one of the things they're doing is certainly raising that awareness. Um, the city, it was brought to my attention that it would be helpful to get, uh, wash stations outside of Free Meal and Rescue Missions, that people that are using those services would have, uh, access to being able to wash their hands. Uh, those are deployed today. Uh, a road closure has been approved between the hours of ten-thirty a.m. and two p.m. on Third Street, Monday through Friday, between a and commercial, so that there can be, um, dining out by Free Meal, but done so in a way that allows for social distancing, and is another way for us to just raise awareness, uh, with our homeless population about some of those best practices that they could employ right now to protect themselves and the larger community. Um, request was made to get a porta potty located by the Free Meal, uh, as well, so we've done that to alleviate a lot of concentration or use with their interior bathroom. How work, how workers, um, uh, part of our community services department are down at Free Meal quite a bit, and they're interacting with the homeless staff as well, and, uh, still trying to do what they do, which of course is marry up people with, uh, needed services and/or shelter if that is available and if that's possible, and they are still doing that. So there's still quite a bit of effort being made by the city, uh, to support our partners or to work directly with the homeless population. Madam Mayor, as I mentioned before, there's probably other questions that people, uh, in general might have, even, you know, perhaps, perhaps you are among them, uh, perhaps the public is among them. What I would just like to close with, if I may, uh, is I want to thank you for the opportunity to share information about the city's actions regarding COVID-19. While the city has put information and links on its webpage, and that was launched just today, and I really applaud, uh, Clerk Powell on getting on that, because I, I gave her very little notice towards the end of the day, and it was launched very quickly. Um, we've issued those press releases. We've tried to share those updates with you and with staff internally. Uh, one of the things that I really want to start stepping up, uh, and I'll probably, we'll start with this very document, uh, possibly with a little bit of added verbiage, is to start sharing that in the same fashion we send out our monthly newsletter, unlike our, our city listserv, so that we can just make sure we're getting this communication out in the broadest sense possible. Um, be, I'll be sharing things like this directly with Eureka Main Street Visitors, uh, Center, uh, the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, we're all, we're all communicating, um, anyways, as it is, but I just feel like we need to make sure that we're sharing as much as we can so that people feel that their city is on top of things, as we are. We're ensuring that emergency services are still happening. Other city businesses are still operating just a little bit differently, and that's not based on fear. That's based on care and concern for the well-being of the public we serve. I'm honored to be in this position, and I'm honored to have your trust to get us through this. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have any questions right now? Um, I just wanted to add to that, that indeed, City Manager Lotter said that we've been talking several times a day, so it's, um, more than just a, an email or two. I think two or three times a day, I'm sitting in his office, responding to questions from the community. Uh, we have sort of reserved our voices here at the dais to, um, to not add to the cacophony of just so much information that's out there. And so by communicating well with the city manager's office and letting that be the voice, it just makes things neater. But you can certainly always reach out to anybody on the council, and that information will be, um, researched and passed on. And I wanted to make sure you all understood that. Additionally, uh, I have a little extra information on local businesses. The Economic Development Community is meeting daily to talk about, um, what's available to support and help businesses as they are starting to face economic hardship. So the North Coast SBDC is the point person. If anybody has any questions, concerns, um, things that they want to do to, um, to prevent, you know, financial hardships, you can reach out to the SBDC. Um, one of the things that I talk about all the time is never, ever, ever be afraid to call your lender. If you happen to be a business and you owe money to somebody, they are the first people that can help you. And, um, if you go to the Humboldt County Office of Economic Development on the Humboldt County website, they have a link to the SBDC page with all of the information. Ironically, it's on the SBDC page, but it's very hard to find. It's easier to just go through Humboldt County. So if you have questions about business, that is what I would recommend. Um, and now we will just go into our, the regular part of our meeting because, uh, there are things out there that we still want to recognize and think about. Um, always with this in the back of our mind, but still, I have a proclamation here for Brain Injury Awareness Month. We had four on the agenda earlier, and people have, uh, opted to cancel the events, and the folks from, um, Making Headway Center for Brain Recovery, um, are not here today, but still would like to have the proclamation read into the record, and I'm happy to do that. So whereas blows to the head, concussions, traumatic brain injuries, and brain injuries from strokes, Alzheimer's, and Parkinson's disease, epilepsy, dementia, and psychological trauma occur every few seconds in the U.S., and whereas brain injuries can happen to anyone and are most often caused by vehicular accidents, falls, recreational activities, war injuries and assaults, strokes, diseases, and various medical conditions. And whereas Making Headway Center for Brain Injury Recovery is a local nonprofit agency dedicated to preventing brain injury, providing mental health services for the community as well as opportunities for self-determination and self-sufficiently, self-sufficiency to people living with brain injuries. Now therefore, I, Mayor Susan Seaman, on behalf of the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim March twenty-twenty to be Brain Injury Awareness Month, and recognize Making Headway Center for Brain Injury Recovery for its important work in the community. And also, if you look at the beautifully restored church just right over there on Seventh and K, that is their offices, and they're doing a lot of good work there. Um, so I'm happy to recognize them. And we also have a presentation, um, that I think is very important today, so I'd like to invite Connie Stewart up to talk about the twenty-twenty census, something that is of utmost importance and is also kind of reeling from our current circumstances. So welcome, Connie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I have some gifts for you, incentive gifts for you here to pass out. Uh, let's see. This one, this one, I keep. Three, four, there. One for you, and... Yes, good, good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Connie Stewart. I work at the California Center for Rural Policy, and we have the honor of being, uh, the lead host for outreach for Census twenty-twenty for Humboldt, Del Norte, and Trinity County. Um, and as with everything, COVID is impacting everything in our lives, and it's also impacting our ability to do census outreach. So I really thank you for this opportunity to come and talk. Uh, most of our residents should have by now received envelopes, multiple envelopes in the mail, and more are coming. Uh, we will get four reminders to take the census, um, this year online. This is our first, uh, census that's completely online. However, if you do not have access to online, you will be sent a paper copy if you do not respond. So, but, um, we're urging everyone to go online and take the census. It's incredibly important to our community, and with what's going on in the world, um, I cannot stress how important. There's about two thousand dollars a person that comes to communities, uh, to, for services each year from, uh, folks taking the census. So we want to make sure that everyone's counted once in the right place. Um, and it's everyone, not just citizens of our, uh, country, but everyone who's living in your community. Why? Because you need money for services. You need money for roads. We need money for hospitals and healthcare. Um, we may also need incredibly important information, like how many houses should we be building, um, in our communities? Where should schools be located? What kind of job incentives should we be providing per person? All of this information comes from the census. Last night, Estelle Fennell called me, Supervisor Fennell called me, and said, "Just how many people do we have over sixty-five in our county?" And what did I do? I looked at census information to find out that we have almost twenty-five thousand citizens over sixty-five who I hope are sheltering in place, um, and listening to this too. Some of them are listening this, to this too. So, um, I'm just here to, um, and I've given you incentives. We were pretty clairvoyant when we decided to pick hand sanitizer as one of the incentives to promote the, uh, census, uh, but I also have some other stuff. We have coloring books, uh, which could also come in handy for people who have kids that are stuck at home or something, uh, that provide information on the whole history of the census. And, uh, the census is part of our constitution, and it has, we've been doing it since seventeen ninety. We do it every ten years. Um, it is confidential, and there are state, or federal laws that require that the information not be shared with immigration. Um, in the past, those laws have been changed, but, uh, they have been tightened since, um, since World War Two, when, uh, the information was given to help round up, uh, Japanese citizens. Uh, so we've been assured that, um, things are in place to make sure that doesn't happen again. So we are urging, especially, we're trying to reach out to what we call hard-to-count folks, um, which are minorities, homeless people, people who have low broadband, uh, veterans, um, seniors, of course, and families with children under five. In particular, those, uh, communities and minorities, we want to make sure that we get a good count for them this year. Uh, there's a lot at stake. Uh, California, uh, loses about two billion dollars a year because of our under-count. Um, and Humboldt County loses quite a bit of money because of that as well. So please, if you can hear the sound of my voice, um, don't ignore this envelope. Um, I know mine's unopened right now, but I promise you it... I know mine's unopened right now, but I promise you it will be open tonight. And I will be going online. You can go online to mycensus or my2020census.gov and take the census, please. I know it's a really tough time and we're all stressed. But as of today, we are not delaying the census. We need to have a complete count. Everybody counted in the right place once by July 30th. There'll also be census, federal census folks knocking on your doors. I tell people, please make it easier for them by taking the census so they don't have to come and find you in your neighborhoods. So I'm here to answer any questions and thank you so much for the opportunity to talk. I know it's, a lot of people have a lot of other things on their mind, but this is incredibly important to our future in California.
So I'm just curious, how do you go about getting the numbers for the houseless population?
Oh, well.
How do you do the outreach?
How do we do outreach?
To that particular population?
To that particular. So there, in addition to just the general count, there are quarters counts that will be occurring. Some of those are going to be delayed because of what's happening with the virus. So all of the shelters have been contacted in the county and they will all have a day when a census person will go in and count them. We've been working with the homeless community too, with the Department of Health and Human Services to make sure that we can get folks counted. Unfortunately, we were planning events and those events can't happen now. I hope that you'll invite me back when this is over and I can tell people where they can go in their communities to do that. But we had, we had had hotspots set up and we were going to have centers set up. I want to be silent about where those are occurring in light of what's going on. But we're asking everybody to do the best they can for now. And we hope that this will pass and we will be able to get back out on the street and help assure that we get a good count for our houseless residents. Thank you.
Well, I got my envelope and opened it and found that I had a question. So maybe this will help other people too. If there are multiple households at one address, how is that handled?
So if you have, if you have residents within your house, then please report on those residents. If you have an A and B situation, they should be considered two units.
Okay.
So hopefully they got envelopes as well and they can report on the people who are living with them as well. But I should also mention that there are, there are numbers set up for folks to give you help. And if you go to a census.ca.gov, you can, which is the California Census line, there is a button you can push and it'll give you a phone number in 13 different languages too, so that you can get any of your questions answered by a professional who's actually works for the census and knows the answers to all those questions. So please feel free, but yes, but we want every unit counted, so.
Okay. And is CaliforniaCensus.org the same site as the one that you just gave? Or is it different?
No, no, that's just the outreach, that's for the outreach and for information. So the site on your census form is my2020census.gov. So that's, that's where you actually take the test, yeah.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other comments? I do want to say, I just finished a year-long fellowship with something called the California Stewardship Network. And for a year, I met with leaders all over the state and we talked about infrastructure and housing and health and just a whole myriad of topics that you would talk about in the state. And we had one person there, Stephanie from Ventura, who talked about the census so passionately, so passionately, that at graduation, every single person mentioned that they were going to go home and help their census. It really is so, it's something that's so easy to do. You don't realize how difficult it is to get hard-to-reach populations to do it. And it makes a big difference. So anybody you know who might be thinking about not filling it out, please encourage them to do that because that translates to real money for the community and real services. So thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm going to practice good behavior and wipe everything down before I walk away from the microphone. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. I want to say one more thing because I had a big moment before this whole COVID thing came up. And I invited some leaders to the community to talk about Cradle to Career, which is really looking at children and how we can support children from, literally from birth until the workforce. We had 50 people in this room representing 10 different public sectors from early childhood education, K-12, and college, public safety. We had business owners, social welfare folks. It was just a really broad group of people, all thinking about what strategies we can work on together to move, to move forward and help our young people. It was a great meeting of 50 folks that was supposed to meet every month. And now we're having to reassess how to, how to continue that. But I promise you that it is still a priority for me to continue those conversations, even if they're virtual or they're just chats, so that we continue to move forward. I'm looking at what we can do to support our children and the people who raise our children in our community. And with that, I will close out the mayor's reports and open up public comment. So this is the time for people who want to come up and have something that they want to say. We have a three-minute limit. Is there anybody here who has signed up for public comment?
Yes, we do. Our first speaker will be Deborah Cullens, followed by Nathaniel Thomas, and then Donna Wright.
Hi.
Hello.
Madam Mayor, my name is Deborah Cullens. I live at the Silvercrest Residence, which is senior living. And it's been brought to our attention that there is a possa, the land behind us at the corner, the southwest corner of 6th and West Avenue, is going to be a homeless encampment, the possible site for that. 20 feet is in our backyard. And this is putting two vulnerable populations at high risk. And speaking of the COVID-19, you know, because lack of self-care for much of the homeless population, you know, bathing and hand washing, and your immune system goes down. And then you've got the seniors, you've got elderly people who already, you know, have, you know, immune issues because of age. You know, and we greatly oppose this. We don't want, we don't want that there. Because there's, and I don't know if it's wetlands or not. I'm not sure. We haven't looked into that. I don't even know where to look for that. But, I mean, plus, right there in that general area and on Tid Street is the Community Health Center, you know, the open door. So if you have, like, we've already experienced thefts, robberies. We've had people break in to the apartments. We've had homeless come in, sneak in, and use drugs. And they're going to the bathrooms and lock the doors. Garbage and litter and feces, you know, in urine, vermin, fires. There's been fires set. And that was just with a small illegal homeless encampment. And if that land is set aside for a larger tent city, which is what we were told, information that we, that we got, that's not going to be good. You know, that's going to be a potential time bomb for the COVID-19. I mean, because they're going to be going out in the community. It's real close to everything. You've got Subway, you've got all these places, and they're going to be going out. And it's just not going to be, it's just not good. We want to live out our golden years with, you know, feeling safe. You know, when we go out and walk our dogs without having somebody come up and, you know, bother you, which has happened. I mean, there's been a lot of issues there. I mean, I've been there a short time and the ladies and everybody I've spoke to that has been, oh, it's my turn, almost up. Anyway, yeah, we're begging. I've got a petition here and I've got a couple of things that I wanted to leave with you to please. And I'm not sure what the process is after that, after we've done this.
So we don't really communicate back and forth from here. But if you'd like to speak to somebody, you can call either the City Manager or me and we could discuss it.
Okay. So, but I can still present this?
Absolutely, absolutely. I just wanted to let you know the process.
Thank you very much.
If you wanted some follow-up.
Okay, thank you.
Alrighty. All right. So you said the next person?
The next person is? Nathaniel Thomas?
Good afternoon. I was just here first and foremost. I was previously on the Civil Grand Jury and as you said, due to illness, I was had to be replaced. But I still felt that my...
I was going to raise this up just a little bit, just because you'd be a little...
Thank you. But as my civil duty, I still took it upon myself to research a few things and actually come up with something that the city could definitely, I think, use. It's in development, that's an invention, because I noticed that we were, we were doing something with the free cell phones. And I noticed the usefulness, definitely. But I've also noticed that how it's financially really costing our city a lot of money. And so I developed something for us to be able to, to, it's almost a, how can I put this? It's like a reinvention of a, of a, oh, what is it? The phone booth, really. But there's a lot more ideas than that. And as you said, to talk to the, to the, what was it? CBDC? But, but as I was working for the government, of course, I care more about the city than I do money. Although I am supposed to be in confidential agreement with Davidson. Because I was also employed with the, with the city of Eureka, I would like to talk about you with us and hopefully Davidson, if they'll ever call me back, about fair development in our city. So that, you know, we, so that this could actually happen for us. Because I see so much that it could actually produce for us, such as, as she said, the census, things like that. As people are needing internet, I've noticed students, they're literally going home from school because they just want Wi-Fi. And a lot of things like that. And so I've put the development together. And honestly, I'm leaving it up to you as a council, if you would like to inquire me about it. I would be more than happy to give up my rights with it so that the city doesn't have to pay any kind of atrocious amount of money for like, you know, patent rights or anything like that. And that was primarily what I wanted to come up here to do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Mayor, councilors, and City Manager. My name is Donna Wright and I'm the President/CEO of the Greater Eureka Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here, just in follow-up you touched on today, Ms. Seaman. There's a group of local, my colleagues, local colleagues, the Small Business Development Center, the county, the city mayor, yourself, REDAC, the Chambers of Commerce, AEDC, and many more that I probably couldn't, couldn't stay for the next hour talking about, that have formed a committee to be out there to provide information to our businesses. This is a wonderful arrangement that we have come to. It's been a great thing watching our, our business leaders come together to be able to put together information that's concise and clear and accurate and come out in one voice. So I'm absolutely thrilled to be part of that. And I thank my colleagues and you, Mayor Seaman, to build up this resilience committee. We're working on a unified message. And one thing that I would like to call our business community to, there is help out there. Our, each of these entities have information on their websites. You did say, and you mentioned in our meeting this morning, and we are meeting daily, that it is a little bit difficult to navigate to the SBDC site, but you can get there through the county, through the Chamber of Commerce's website. It's on our front page. It's on REDAC's front page. And you can also reach that through social media. We want to bring a sense of hope to our community in these really trying times. I've been a business owner myself. I've fielded a lot of phone calls over the last few days. And I would ask our community to come together. While we want to practice great safety and we certainly don't want to cause any harm or unnecessary ill health or death to our community, we do want to support our local businesses. So I would encourage you, speaking for the Chamber of Commerce, to come to our website and come to our social media pages. Right now, I still have my staff in the office working on a video that we're working with this committee to be able to bring out information on a daily basis. That's easy to be able to drive business and drive you back to the websites and to give you the information that you need. I would ask you in particular to work with those businesses, such as restaurants and bars. A lot of them are providing drive-through services, handout services, home deliveries. In particular, right now, they're the very front line that have been closed down. And I'd ask you to support those. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have any other public comment? All right. Seeing none, I will move on to the consent calendar. And we do have one item that's being pulled from the consent calendar. Not for discussion, but just because the Rhododendron Parade sponsorship is no longer an issue since the Rhododendron Parade has been canceled. So do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
One second.
Please vote. All in favor, Heidi?
Aye.
Unanimous, or for yes votes. Councilmember Allison, absent, motion carries.
Excellent. And now we are going to move on to item C1, which is the very definition of a continuing business. I believe.
That item will be presented by me. This is the, as you know, Public Works Director Brian Gerving had brought this forward to you. It's a procurement ordinance update and this is the second reading. There were no requested changes of that ordinance at the last meeting. And so it is here for your consideration.
All right. Does anybody have questions, City Clerk? Good. Do I have a mo, oh, do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, do I have a motion? Or discussion?
I'll move to wave reading, read by title only, and adopt bill number 977-TexCS, an ordinance of the city of Eureka, amending Eureka Municipal Code. Is that the symbol mean chapter?
Section.
Section 39.38 pertaining to informal bidding requirements.
All second. All right, everybody vote. Councilmember Mesner?
Yeah.
For yes votes, Councilmember Allison, absent, motion carries.
Moving on to item C2. This is the new item that we were adding today. It is the COVID-19 emergency time off. And I believe Director, HR Director Folger is here to talk about that.
Mayor and council? I'm Will Folger, Director of Human Resources, here to provide to you the following amendment to some city policies regarding time off, sick leave, and our temporary disability policy in response to the COVID-19 outbreak. As you know, the city is mandated to provide a safe and healthy work environment for its employees and to implement strategies to reduce the potential exposure to illness or injury in the workplace. As state and federal mandates require all employers to follow those sort of guidelines. And we have an IIPP, an Injury and Illness Prevention Program, to that effect, which we follow and we regularly meet our... we follow and we regularly meet our safety committee to discuss various more routine issues that come up. But as you know, the COVID-19 outbreak is not a routine issue and requires a novel approach to this novel virus. So unintended punage there, no offense intended. But anyway, so what we've decided to do after some research is to follow similar steps that are being taken by other municipalities in Northern California and make two recommendations to you. One is to provide additional sick leave for employees who are impacted by circumstances related to the COVID-19 outbreak. Those go beyond simply contracting the disease themselves. It could be needing to self-quarantine or self-isolate because they are particularly susceptible to the severe effects of the disease if they have some kind of underlying medical issue of their own, or they're within a certain age bracket where it's recommended by health officials that they self-isolate. Or care for children whose schools have been closed as a result of the outbreak, which has happened. Countywide, we've seen massive school closures and that has an immediate impact on employees with children that attend those schools. So what this policy amendment allows for is to amend the sick leave restrictions to allow employees to use any portion of their benefit time, including sick leave, to take off work for issues related to COVID-19, including but not limited to school care and daycare closures, contracting the virus itself, or caring for a loved one who has contracted the virus. In addition to providing 80 hours of sick leave in advance to city employees to use if those issues affect them. So what that does is it provides an additional time bank of 80 hours of sick leave that can be used for something other than simply being sick yourself. And then if you do use that sick leave during the emergency situation that we're currently in, you would then be required to pay those back by accrual through the remainder of the year until the amount of sick hours that you'd used are paid back to the city. So it's a cost neutral to the city over the long run. The second component to this recommendation is to authorize the city manager to make emergency changes to our current temporary disability leave policy to provide for emergency-specific criteria under which employees may access partial wage coverage under this plan if it becomes necessary to continue providing time off accommodations in response to COVID-19 impacts. So you'll hopefully remember, most of you, in 2018, we adopted a new temporary disability leave policy for extreme cases where employees had to be out of work due to a disability or an illness, an injury, something of that nature, that was not a workplace injury or illness. Well, with this current emergency, these, a lot of our employees are being impacted again by things that aren't necessarily a workplace injury or illness, but by extreme measures being taken by the state and local governments to protect people's health and safety in the community and isolating at home, that kind of stuff, particularly as it relates to childcare. So if we needed to, the reason why we put this provision in there is in case we had employees on an individual basis who exhausted the additional 80 hours of leave and had no other benefit time to draw from, that they would be able to tap into this temporary disability leave policy that we have now for continuing partial wage coverage as it exists under the current policy. What that would look like would be, we would make criteria based on the current status of the emergency and the person's individual case-by-case basis. And that would be advised on, like I said, an individual basis, but it would ultimately be up to the city manager at that point to administratively approve and change the provisions of the eligibility requirements under the temporary disability leave policy that we have now. That's a lot to digest, especially for this just being brought up to you. So I could go into more detail if you have further questions. I believe you've been provided with the discussion and the staff report. Hopefully you've had some time to look at that, but if there's any particulars, I'm happy to answer your questions.
So family leave is also being extended from the state level, that people, if they have an extended need to take care of somebody in their family, that's an additional, not city, benefit. So I'm wondering how that is, how that measures with the temporary disability?
Are you saying?
Why would they do the temporary disability instead of family leave?
Yeah, so the city, you're referring to state disability insurance?
Yeah, through the family leave.
Yeah, and that's paid family leave is a provision of the state disability insurance, which the city does not pay into. But our temporary disability leave program somewhat mirrors the state disability insurance program. It's internally funded and we have some eligibility requirements that are a little more tailored to our needs here, gives us a little more control over the application of that benefit. But there is a parental leave component for new parents, but the temporary disability leave program as it stands now only applies to employees who have suffered some sort of non-work-related injury or illness where they're not able to attend work. And then there's other eligibility requirements for that. What we would be able to do if you adopt this change to that policy is look specifically at people who are caring for others. Because right now, our temporary disability leave policy does not cover care of family members, but that could be a provision that we add to it.
This all makes a lot more sense, knowing that we didn't have that other option.
Okay.
So I was just, I was wondering why we needed that if this was, but I didn't realize we didn't pay into it. Things I'm still learning. Councilmember Royal?
I think you partially answered, I have a couple of questions, but I think you partially answered one of them. The staff report specifies that the city manager is the one who can make emergency changes to that policy, but then in the resolution, I just wasn't seeing it as clear. I guess you're talking about now therefore be it resolved, and then there's number two that talks about city employees may use portions of their benefit time, et cetera, et cetera. But that temporary disability leave policy, to me, wasn't obvious where that fit into the actual resolution.
So those are two separate actions under this agenda item?
Got it, thank you. So that policy just isn't attached because it's already in existence?
Yes.
Okay. And so we're just authorizing that an additional person can make those changes?
Exactly. It would basically mean that those changes, if we needed to do it on an individual basis in response to someone's individual crisis, we could do it without having to wait to bring it before council. It's something that could be administratively approved.
Great. Yeah, I like that change. I just, I think generally when we're approving something, I know this is all happening very quickly, but generally when we're approving something, I would, I would be expecting to see a copy of it with that addition, you know, that kind of thing. But I understand what you're saying and it makes sense.
Okay.
Given the circumstances.
Apologies for not incorporating that policy in this, as an attachment.
And my other question was around, so if folks use an advance of 80 hours of sick leave and then leave our employee, are we just saying, well, so be it? Or how would that be handled?
If, you're saying if somebody were to separate from city service after having been, after having used the additional sick leave?
And they didn't, they weren't able to then recoup it through the rest of their work with the city, would that just be something we would?
We wouldn't be able to recoup it after they had left, but the hope would be that they would stay, obviously.
We hope they will stay.
But no, but that is a fair question. No, we wouldn't be able to recoup it from them after they had left city service because of the nature of the benefit being sick leave.
Got it.
And it being utilized for that purpose. Again, under these emergency circumstances, this would still be something that was vetted on an individual basis. They'd have to qualify for it. And the provisions that allow people to access that would go away once the local emergency had abated. So we'll hopefully be avoiding something like that. It's not going to be super widely used, I would imagine. It is intended for emergencies only.
And the... Are we saying that they need to use all their available leave first and then dip in, start dipping into that? Or does that like?
This additional time bank would be available when they are experiencing some kind of emergency. They would need to use their addition, their sick leave that they have on the books before dipping into this additional 80 hours. But if they didn't have enough time on the books, or they wiped out a lot of their sick leave initially, then this would be already there, available for them to start dipping into, if it became necessary. We do have employees who have serious health issues that require them to use frequent, to frequently use their current sick leave banks. And that, I believe, is at the forefront of our minds when we were creating this particular policy, is to just give everyone the same access to this additional amount if they needed it.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Bregal?
So along that vein, it seems to me that we had a policy in place for sharing time? Do we still have that?
We do. That's called the special circumstances leave. It's one by which employees can donate time that they have on the books and it's just vacation and other, it's non-sick leave benefit time.
Oh, I see, okay.
That they can donate to one another as needed if they qual, if an individual employee qualifies for the special circumstances leave program, they can solicit donations, or the city would solicit donations on their behalf from coworkers.
Okay, so would that be, would that be an additional step in this process? Or would we, we would just go straight to the 80,000?
We, I believe, would just go straight to this 80, these 80 hours.
80 hours, I see.
Because I ju, I can see this potentially becoming a program that more employees need to access. And if you imagine a lot of people or whole swathes of employee groups needing the additional time and not, you know, maybe on a here and there basis, it's a little more difficult to solicit donations if there's, if they're going every which way. That one would be available for people who, I believe, would exhaust these additional benefits that we're suggesting to you now. And the special circumstances leave is still there. That's somewhat a last-ditch effort. We're trying to get out ahead of that one, if we can, by offering a bit of a buffer.
So it would still be an option at the end of this process?
It would, yeah, that's still there.
If necessary, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Royal?
So it's not exactly relevant to this resolution, but I think enough that I can ask it. So we're talking about our employees here, but we also have contractors and consultants for various projects. Do you see that we might need to, and this might, you know, really not be in your wheelhouse, but would we need to be adding additional flexibility around that or deadlines? Does council need to be considering taking any action around, this might actually be more relevant to the procurement policy, but, or around our, you know, any agreements we have with outside workers?
Well, that's definitely a fair question. I think flexibility is advisable, where it can, where you can be flexible to accommodate some of our contractors, people who are working for us in the field who aren't necessarily regular city workers. That question also goes to our temporary staff, which we have quite a few temporary staff that we rely very heavily on. This policy is only available to regular, regularly appointed city workers. However, other contract workers or casual workers, such as temporary employees, can access unemployment. Those regulations have been updated and I would recommend that anyone who's working on behalf of the city on a contract or as a temporary worker who ceases to earn a paycheck for a significant period of time as a result of closing down city programs and operations should contact EDD and seek workers' unemployment insurance, rather.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I know that a lot of folks in our community are already needing to look into those services and so it's, yeah, it's just helpful to think about. Of course, I hope that we can be flexible around deliverables. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? If not, do we have any comments from the audience? Seeing none, I will bring it back for comments here or a motion? Councilmember Bregal?
Well, I will make the motion. So I move that we adopt a resolution of the city council relating to employee procedure and leave accruals in response to COVID-19, and to authorize the city manager to make emergency changes to the Temporary Disability Leave Act, or Policy Number 330, to provide for emergency-specific criteria under which employees may access partial wage coverage pursuant to this policy if it becomes necessary to continue providing time off accommodations in response to COVID-19 impacts.
I'll second. Everybody vote. Councilmember Mesner?
Yes. Can you hear me? Yes.
For yes votes, Councilmember Allison, absent, motion carries.
I forgot to bring it back for discussion. I just want to say one thing, which is, I was talking to somebody today and coming out of this thing that we're in right now, human capital is going to be our most valuable resource. So I really appreciate the city considering how to cultivate our, that resource by taking care of our current employees. And so, thank you for thinking about this. Moving on to our next item, which has been taken off of the agenda, the general fund budget we will talk about at a later meeting. Sorry, I forgot to mention that in my changes. And so we will be able to move on to, we already heard the city manager reports, we can move on to council reports. And we'll start with Councilmember Castellano, he's been so quiet today.
I know, so few opportunities to ask questions. Let's see, well, first I want to say that my, I did have a town hall meeting planned for this Thursday and that has been postponed ironically on the theme of neighborhood resilience, which I'm sure is something we're all thinking about. So please do feel free to write me an email if this is something you're interested in talking about or conversing about electronically or by letter, or however we choose. In the meantime, also, the neighborhood meeting for the Wabash Commercial District has also been postponed and I'll update when those will be rescheduled in the future. Let's see, that being said, I won't speak to everything I did in the last two weeks, but I did want to bring up that Gavin Newsom did release today that there's an executive order that authorizes local governments to halt evictions for renters and homeowners, slow foreclosures, and protects against utility shut-offs. We have spoken to utility shut-offs, but I would be interested in the City of Eureka moving forward or in agreement with this, with halting evictions. I believe it goes until May 31st, 2020, unless it's extended. Is that something that other council members are interested in?
I'd like to learn more.
Pardon?
I would like to learn more.
Yeah, okay.
And I'd be interested in discussing it. I have some questions.
Great. So maybe we can discuss it at a future?
Meeting?
Meeting? Great. And then, let's see, the other thing I did is I met with Alderon Laird, who a few years ago conducted a Eureka sea level rise assessment study. What I learned from him is that the study was never presented to council. And so I would be interested at a future meeting and having that him present that study along with any updates.
How long ago was the study?
Seems to me, Councilmember Mezner, I mean, Arroyo, you could speak to this, but it seems to me we did have a report from him in twenty fourteen or twenty fifteen, like right when we were brand new.
I remember a report, but maybe it wasn't the final, so. I've seen his report many, many times, but I'd be happy for it to come here. Could we have an updated, he would be interested in presenting an update to it.
Talk about that. I mean, we have so many things going on right now and that doesn't.
It wouldn't have to be next month, maybe over the summer.
And does he have more information from twenty fourteen?
Yeah, updated information.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Talk about putting it on a different, on a later agenda.
Yeah, not, not in the next month. I think we have other things on our plate. Yeah, yeah. But, you know, okay, great. And that's all for me for now. Thank you. Everything that I was going to make announcements about has been postponed, is a nice way to say it. Probably canceled, either canceled or postponed. So at this time, I don't have any, any updates that I need to give other than just a general, I just want to comment on my, how pleased I've been to see our community already uniting and looking for creative ways to help one another and people signing up to help seniors in our community and just speaking to neighborhood resilience and how folks are already given, like the shifting sands we're on, already really creatively and enthusiastically stepping up to the plate to help each other. And I hope that folks look to the helpers when things are scary. And I know I certainly am. And I'm grateful for our staff and our city administration as a whole. Really just working so quickly to adapt and continuing to do that. So I just want to offer encouragement and exhort people to continue on that path. That's all I have.
Councilmember Bregal.
Well said. So I just have a few things. So I attended some on the CATE board, the Community Access Project Eureka. Really great things coming out of the golf course. And if you haven't eaten lunch or dinner out there, I encourage you to do so. I heard it's awesome. Mexican food, so Cinco de Mayo is coming up. Support our local business when we can and how we can. I mean, it's a ways away, but still, you know, something to think about. And then just to let you know, Betty Chin will be serving dinner Monday through Friday from three thirty to four thirty down at Sixth and Seventh and C. They'll be sending people outside, so they'll be opening up and then serving the food and then people will be eating outside. But they'll be free meals. Also, Eureka High is open eleven to one P M for children eighteen and under to have lunch. So there are food opportunities for people who may not have that available all the time. And then I just wanted to say, I went to two different events. Usually I don't talk about all the events I go to, but I wanted to talk about two of them because I went to, I was invited by the Heritage Society to go to the Annie B. Ryan House and Gardens. And what a beautiful place. I remember when that place was just so overgrown and just a train wreck. And the garden behind, I'd taken my kids there to play and to climb the trees and all of that, once they'd started to restore it. And it was really heartwarming. They have a rose garden there dedicated to Melanie Cannell, who has been a great advocate in our city and really done a lot of great work. So that was really neat. So I would just encourage people, if you get the opportunity to go to the East Street side and just check out the garden, they have all different things. They have vegetables, they have a rain garden, they have individual plots that are available that you can maintain. So.
And that's the one thousand block of East Street.
And that's, yeah, the Eureka Heritage Society is in charge of that. Thank you. And then secondly, I got to play mayor pro tem, well, I am mayor pro tem, but I got to be mayor and go to an event with Sir Optimus Making a Difference Awards Dinner. And I want to tell you that when I left that place, my heart was so full just at all of the great things that people in our community are doing. And I know it sounds really corny, but it was really inspiring and heartwarming to just see people, like that whole willingness to be good people and to be a part of our community and to be helpful and positive and just wanting to do well with us. And I, I just, it was really just a great experience. I really appreciated that. And with that, the perilous plunge, you're going to have to watch it online, which is a bummer because it was canceled due to the big event. So we'll all be videoing our routines and then putting them up. So it should be fun, but not like it usually is. And with that, I think I've finished.
All right. Councilmember Mezner?
Thank you for that. And I know so many things have been canceled and there's a lot that has, that is really up in the air right now. And in the midst of all this, I just want to say thank you to the Eureka citizens for the ways that you're working to support one another. Isolation is actually an especially vulnerable place for many people to be. And so just to encourage people to think about those around you that particularly those who might be isolated and vulnerable, to encourage you to think about them and what you can do to reach out, check in on neighbors, give them a call. If you are going shopping, see if they might need something. Some people can't go out because they are in those kind of vulnerable populations and they don't know what to do and they are scared. And so just checking in on each other, I think that's a really important thing to do. And if there's, you know, if there's any needs that people might have to see how we might be able to care for one another in the middle of this kind of crisis. And we do not, we don't know how long this will be right now. We only know what we have at our fingertips at any given moment. I think it's important to just keep that in mind. Let's be really good neighbors and thinking about how we can come together and care for our community in the best ways we can and really be the good Eureka citizens that we are historically known to be in coming together in crisis.
Thank you. And now before we go, I have an item that was pretty important that I should have talked about during the mayor's report. It's hard. The mayor's report's so full of like proclamations and things, I forget to report things out. But Waterfront Recovery reached out to me. They were an organization I think you're familiar with. They're doing a lot of the drug rehab treatment. They were started with community money with the understanding that once they became approved for Cal, Cal drug, they would, yeah, drug Medi-Cal, that they would start to get funding. And they did that on time. They were approved last April and they have still not received any money. And they're about to close their doors. They almost did. The county came through to keep them open a little bit longer. But we absolutely do not want them to close their doors. So I was wondering if we can get consensus on a very, on a letter that strongly encourages the state to get with it and pay the bills that they said that they were going to pay. They don't back pay either. So once they start, it's just going to be starting to get the payments that we should have gotten last April. So unless there's some disagreement, I've already had City Clerk Howell draw up a letter and we can sign it as a council. I'll also be signing the Waterfront Recovery's letter and I hope the county is doing this as well. Councilmember Mezner, do you have any, any reason to not want to do that?
No, I think that's a really good idea and I think we should definitely do that. Thank you for bringing that up.
Excellent. I'm glad we got out of here without forgetting to do that. And the final thing is, some of the, oh wait, Councilmember Castellano.
I, I do support that, but I would like to, as, before we draft the letter, just find out a little bit more about the context of the late payment, just so that we draft a letter that kind of speaks to the context a little bit more than.
Well, I will let you look at the letter, which was, which really most of it came from the Waterfront Recovery's letter that they're sending out as well. And if that's not enough context, I would reach out to them directly and I can hook you up with some folks from the board that can explain more of it to you.
I just know that we've written letters, sometimes urging, urgent, encouraging urgency on something without, you know, with parts of the picture, not, not knowing the full part of the picture. So I'm, again, totally supportive. I just would like to see the letter and, you know, understand the picture.
All right, council, our, yeah, I was going to ask City Clerk to send a letter to everybody so they could see it.
Yeah, that's great. So I would also like to let you know that not only has Waterfront not received their money, but I believe Crossroads nor H R C has received their Drug Medi-Cal either. So we've got three treatment facilities in our city that are not receiving those monies. So that's worth checking into. And since they didn't ask, maybe you don't need to go forward with it. But certainly, we need to support these treatment facilities. I mean, we have too few in our area in my mind as it is. So.
That is really good to know. This sounds like something we definitely need to look into as a.
I know that Crossroads and our, and H R C, excuse me, have sent their information in two times now, I believe, so.
And they just got a review of their, a review of their facility and they got some of the best remarks in the state. They just aren't getting the money. And I don't know, I know that with Medi-Cal in general, there's just a lot of nitpicky. I've heard things like putting a staple in it will stop something from happening. I have no idea. That was not with, that was with Medi-Cal, Medi-Cal. But thank you for letting us move forward. We will send you the letter so that you can look at it if you have further questions. And we will definitely, I think, make some phone calls to make sure we're, please do. And the final thing is, one of the biggest things that the city is really excited about is the canopy walk and we broke ground. And right after we broke ground. Oh, I'm sorry. The Redwood. Skywalk. I am so sorry. I remembered to say something about it. We're really happy that construction is starting and people should be able to visit the Redwood Skywalk in September if we're able to move forward as planned. So I also wanted to give a big shout out to everybody for moving that forward. And with that, possibly we're adjourned? Looks like we can go. All righty.